All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Finance and Performance Committee. I am Councilman John Bullock, Chair of the Committee. I'm also joined by a committee member, Councilmember Felicia Porter. We're also joined by Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee, as well as several city agencies, also including the City Council President's Office and the Mayor's Office. And as you all know, today is DPW Day here in the Finance and Performance Committee. I do want to talk about the legislative oversight for 240056, Agency Briefing, Department of Public Works, Bureau of Water and Wastewater, and again, for the purpose of calling on pertinent city agency representatives of the Department of Public Works, including senior management of the Water and Wastewater Utilities, to brief the City Council on the current operations of the systems, its financial performance through the second quarter and of the fiscal year 2024, and any financial projection through the end of the current fiscal year. Also, an update on any staffing vacancies, the impact of recent position, recent classifications, staff's report on outstanding maintenance issues, improvements, efforts to improve delinquencies and collection efforts, and any other improvement efforts underway. And I know you guys have a presentation for us, but I did also want to take this time to thank Richard Luna and also Khalil Zaid. So again, DPW, I know there's been some movement, so if you could introduce the team. I know we're familiar with so many folks that are here today, but if you could go ahead and either introduce your team or have your team introduce themselves, that'd be great.
Yeah, so Khalil Zaid, Acting Director for the Department of Public Works. Good afternoon to everybody here today.
Richard Luna, Deputy Director for the Department of Public Works.
Marcia Collins, Office of Legislative Affairs.
Deep D Moda, Chief Administrative Officer.
Regionally CFO.
Paul San, Acting Bureau Head for the Bureau of Water and Wastewater.
Latoya Curtis, Acting Chief of Staff.
Katie Brinson-Hitten, Deputy General Counsel.
Marco Merrick, Chief of Equity and Environmental Justice.
Stephen Salisbury, Deputy City Solicitor.
Good afternoon, Darnell Ingram, General Counsel, Chief Compliance Officer.
Evelyn Cordero, Special Assistant.
All right, awesome. I think we have everyone. And if you want to jump into your presentation, I see we're also being joined by Representative from the Mayor's Office as well. So again, I think we have full coverage. Council President's Office represented as well. So again, thank you. But please feel free to jump right in.
Good afternoon. Just, I wanted to thank you for this opportunity to allow us to present to you and to present to the Council today this very important subject of ours. So, and with that, I'll just go ahead and start the presentation.
So, good afternoon. Again, I'm Paul San, the Acting Bureau Head for the Bureau of Water and Wastewater. And again, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present our, the Bureau's performance and financial updates. So our first debate is on the wastewater treatment plant consent decree, which was entered in November of 2023. I think it's important to note that before even entering the consent decree, DPW was actively addressing operational and maintenance issues, which resulted in both plants meeting their compliance requirements since the summer of 2020, 2023, I'm sorry, 2022, with two minor incidents that happened in April of '23 and then in January of this year. So because of those operational improvements that we've made over the last few years, we've seen the, both plants, meaning not only the compliance, but having their best days, best operational days in years. Certainly in recent history, if not in the history of the plant. So by far, the, both plants have been operating well, well above any anticipated or any requirements. So as far as the consent decree goes, the city's completed 23 of 31 relief items that had a completion date or deadline. That's roughly 74% of the requirements. And we anticipate by the end of, kind of, the year '24, completing 89% or 27 of those 31 items. Next slide? Our next update is on the modified consent decree. Just a little background, that we had entered the original consent decree in 2002. And then in 2017, the city entered into this modified consent decree. And that modified consent decree is broken into two sections. The Phase One, which was rehabilitation of the sewer collection system. That was to reduce sanitary sewer overflows. That work began in 2017, was completed in 2023. So also in 2023, we submitted to MDE and EPA the Phase Two Plan. And that plan outlined additional improvements to the collection system and enhanced preventive maintenance to further reduce the number of sanitary sewer overflows. That work actually began in 2023. It's required to be completed in 2030. We're still waiting on approval of that Phase Two Plan from the regulators. So quite an extensive program. Over 20 years of the DPW continuously improving the collection system at a cost of over $2 billion. But the results we're seeing today. So as that graph on the left will show, we've seen dramatic decreases in the volume of sanitary sewer overflows as well as the number of sanitary sewer overflows. So for the last four years, well, since 2020, you'll see that graph, dramatic decreases, 79% decrease in the SSO volumes. Next slide? Yes, ma'am.
Quick question. The sanitary sewage overflow, how are you all rectifying, like, when it goes over into the neighborhood, so the people's homes? One of the major issues that we're experiencing, as you know, in, like, Mall Park and some of those sanitary sewage overflows, they're going into people's homes. So is that city line or is that city and residential line with the reduction that you're talking about?
Our reductions are based off of the actual event. So whether the overflow winds up going on public or private property, it's still one overflow.
Okay.
Our next update is on our underground water tanks. So again, just a little background. The underground water tank program began in 2008. It was to replace five uncovered finished water reservoirs. So again, a rather long program. If you fast forward to 2023, a half billion dollars later, December of last year was a wonderful year for, a wonderful month for the Department of Public Works and for the city. So on December 7th of last year, we achieved functional use of the Ashburn Underground Tank. That was a 25 million gallon tank. And then two weeks later, December 21st, we achieved functional use of the Druid Lake Reservoir. So that one was a 16 million gallon tank. As a result of our work since 2008 and then ending in December of last year, EPA terminated the 2023 administrative order on consent. Next slide? Just some, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't talk a little bit about some current work and specifically about our Lead and Copper Rule Revision Program. As most of us know, that program was recently kicked off late last year. So in December of last year, we publicly launched this Service Line Partnership Program to address EPA's mandate for all water system owners throughout the nation to build a lead pipe inventory and then develop a program to replace lead pipe. So we've been doing public outreach since that time. We've had a number of community meetings, both with the city and county. And we also had a, that happened in January. We had two of those. And in February, we had a joint meeting with, partnership with Johns Hopkins University, a virtual town hall. And we continue to find new opportunities to reach out to the community, whether it's in person or virtual.
Quick question. What's been the level of participation thus far?
With our self-surveys?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're still in the low, low single digits. It is, it has been a very slow process for us to not only ramp up that program, but that's what we're hoping with our continued public outreach, that we're able to accelerate the partnership.
Bureau Head, if you could clarify just the number of people that have submitted on the number of surveys so far? I believe it's higher than just single digits.
Oh, it's, so we have so far about 3,500 surveys that have been submitted. But I mean, I'm sorry, I meant as a total participation of the entire program or number of accounts. It's still in the low single digits, but 3,500 have been submitted so far.
So what's the overall number of accounts that we have to reach?
It's 120,000.
120,000. And so, Mr. Chairman, I ask another question. So what type of non-traditional communication strategies are you employing, given that that's less than 10% of, you know, the homes that you need to reach? How are you all kind of leveraging some of these non-traditional communication strategies?
Yeah, so we've had, we've developed an integrative public outreach program. It includes various channels to reach out to people, whether it's through in-person, virtual, social media. We've done radio ads. Where our next phase is to start looking, start doing door-to-door knocking and to educate people on the importance of the lead program and to promote.
So one of the major issues that I, that I just kind of gleaned from just, you know, what you were saying about just your communication strategy, one area that's missing target audience is seniors. The only reason why I say this, because I did a senior town hall in Cherry Hill and they were still equating kind of the lead pipe issue with the, with the previous issue of the bacteria being in the water. So they're not really separating the two issues. And I'm wondering if that's a larger conversation that Director, kind of, you can kind of lean into to make sure that not only are we reaching people through social media, through Facebook, social media ads, things of that nature, we're also reaching people in non-traditional strategy. So I'm talking about going to our senior, you know, senior town halls. I have three coming up. I know the Waxter Center, Andoria Harmon is doing things there. Reaching people in the DSS, DSS office. Like really tapping into some of these agencies, city agencies that see a large quantity of people at one time and then kind of leveraging your message there.
Yeah, absolutely. I think this is, this is the right approach to move forward. One of the ideas actually to go knock door, you know, door by door, it's, will give us a better idea how many will respond out of that, you know, group, the elderly. And we'll look at all the other options that you might have for us as well.
And just to add on to that, so we are working now with the Mayor's Office on a door-to-door program specifically for the seniors. So we're in contract negotiations for a third party to help with staff support for that.
So you're working with a third party for staff support for community engagement?
Focused on seniors.
Focused on seniors.
Yes, yes.
How much is that going to cost, though?
We're still in negotiations on that.
And you don't have that, you don't have that capacity in-house to do that?
We have that capacity, but we're trying to expand beyond what we have now. We do have limited resources for that.
Okay.
So just back to the lead-in program, lead-in copper program, just in general. Again, we've done some outreach to this point. You'll see the QR code on the top left for those who are watching. If they could scan that code and take the self-survey, we are asking for all, from help from all of our customers, both in the city and the county, to complete that survey, help build, help build that inventory for us. There's also a website underneath that QR code for those that want to get more information. It's a very simple survey, three to five minutes. Just needs a penny or something to scratch a pipe with and a magnet and a phone to take two photos and then complete the survey. And if that can be uploaded, we'll get that information and again, continue to build our inventory. Next slide? So up next, I'll talk about our capital plans. So starting with our water utility, you'll see just a few of our current and future water projects. So we talked about the Druid and Ashburn Tank Projects. Again, functional use was achieved late last year. Work is continuing on restoration in the, at those two sites. We expect a restoration to be completed sometime in the summer of this year. And then we have some upcoming work. Our water facilities SCADA system, the SCADA system is our, is a replacement of our operational software that helps to operate our treatment plants. But it also is there to maintain the cybersecurity threats or to maintain the security of those threats. We also have the Vernon Pump Station, again, getting ready for contract advertisement. And our water main program, very successful program. So far, we've completed just under 10 miles of pipe replacement. And that, when I say completed, as in it's been replaced and in functional use. Last year, in fiscal year 2023, we're at, we had done 16.7 miles of water main replacement. And so ahead of what our goal was. And we are on track to hit the 15 miles for this fiscal year. Next slide? All right, on the wastewater, on the utility side, again, you'll see some projects both at our treatment plants, our pump station, the Eastern Avenue Pump Station, and then even in the, in the collection system, our low-level sewer shed, I-N-I rehab project, that's just sewer rehabilitation. Yes, sir.
Couple of clarifying questions on the, on the previous slide. And some of it's specific, but I want to get an overall piece. So in terms of the water main replacement, that 15 miles, where is that throughout the city? I mean, I know it has to be spread, but where are we talking about?
What geographical areas?
Yes.
I don't have it in front of me, but we can certainly share a map. I have a map of those areas.
Okay, and then the reason why I ask is more for a specific reason. One of the things that's come about in the last couple of weeks, and we did have a meeting last week with some of our DPW team, that the southwest area, we know it's an older historic area, but the water mains and the infrastructure is quite old. But there's also water pressure issues, right? So low water pressure. So I was curious in terms of, one, how you determine the priorities of that 15 miles and where that is and, and also where you expect it to be going in the future, too?
Yeah, so from an operational standpoint, the replacement project locations are primarily driven by the number of water main breaks. So there's that, but then we also take into account finance as well as social benefits. So it's a combination of both, but from an operational standpoint, that's what it's primarily based off of.
And when you say social benefits, what does that mean?
We have, we have various criteria for number of customers who may be affected, their, their, the area that, the area of the city that they may be in. We certainly don't want to be replacing water mains in one area of the city. It's really should be shared, a shared resource.
And I have another quick question. What's the estimated turnaround, well, estimated completion time for resolving those water main breaks?
Water main breaks?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that's, again, prioritize our, our first priority is always water main breaks that, that result in no water service to customers. And then you have the water main breaks that may, that may result in damage to roads. And then all the other breaks and more leaks that may, that have not yet been addressed. But our first priority is always make sure that everyone has service.
Thanks so much for that response. Do you have a duration? So what are we looking at, three months, four months?
To complete all of the?
No, to just complete, like, so if we're the average, average time turnaround. So the only reason why I'm asking is because Councilman Bullock and I kind of share that neighboring district. And I believe it's Whistler Avenue has been, yeah, we, I know Javon sent you the list. So Whistler Avenue has been, like, trying to get fixed for a long time now. I think it's like over six months. And I don't know why.
Maybe we can have offline conversations. So the water main breaks, those are always priority. If you're talking about water main leak, again, that there's priority to those. So the water main leaks, again, it's based off of if it's affecting service and then the next step is if it's affecting roadway.
So I'm looking here at the, at the plans and I will be happy to share it with you. But it's really distributed all over the city. Looking at it and I'll be happy to, for you to see it. Yeah, I'm talking about the 15 miles here.
And then one follow-up, because I hear what Councilmember Porter is saying, too, because the question around, you know, social benefits and all that. I mean, we know, for instance, in Pig Town and then some parts of Holland's Market, there are some business owners that are affected. And so we're thinking about businesses, communities. But I get what you're saying in terms of, you know, if it is affecting the roadway and then you're sort of triaging all of that. But again, want to make sure that we're connecting those dots, too.
I understand.
Okay.
So just back over onto the wastewater side. Again, you can see just a sampling of some of our projects, whether they be at the treatment plants, at the pump stations, or within the collection system. So just as a brief update, the Patapsco Wastewater Treatment Plant, Headworks Improvements, that's scheduled for a 2024 advertisement or later this year, as well as the Eastern Avenue Pump Station. The Egg Digestor Project, the one that, at the top, that one we just issued, notice to proceed. Next slide? And similarly, on the Stormwater Utility, you'll see these are types of projects that we have planned, whether it's stream restoration, flood mitigation, asset management, so maintenance on our collection system. So quite a, quite a bit of money spent throughout the stormwater system. I will note that by looking at all, at all three of these utilities, we have seen the effects of cost increases on our, in our bids. So I'll give you an example on our, one of the water main replacement projects. Recently, we've seen an increase in the, in the cost, 10% increase alone just for material costs. So it's a balance between how much work we can do and how much it does it cost. So that's true of any agency at any time, but particularly now, we have seen the effects of material equipment and labor costs, both external and internal, which we'll get into later. So next slide? So I'll talk a little bit about the sewer system performance. I brought this up in previously, just the tremendous work that we've done over the last few years, certainly with our Headworks, Headworks work at the Back River Plant, but over, as I said, the last 20 years of improvements to the collection system. We're seeing the results, as this graph shows, a 42% decrease in the number of sanitary sewer overflows. I mentioned the 79% decrease in the volume. So we're seeing these, these improvements. We don't stop in trying to find further improvements, both in the collection side and on the treatment side, to further reduce the number of overflows. And that may include capital projects or preventive maintenance. Next slide? So here are just, again, some sampling of some other graph, other metrics that we take a look at. You'll see the graph on the left, this is our, for our water distribution system. We're looking at the number of breaks that we just talked about, the number of breaks per month. And you'll see that we have the steady increase, beginning roughly in November, peaking in January and then dropping back down, just as an FYI. That's a result of the change in, in, in temperature. It's not so much when the weather gets cold, but when it gets cold and then starts warming up, where you have that variation in temperature is where you start seeing, where we start seeing more and more breaks occurring. So we did have a relatively mild December. We really hit cold, cold snaps in January and then started in late January into February, warming up again. And that's when we were seeing more and more breaks.
Before you go on, one thing that I just want to note on this last slide, because as you mentioned, when this slide mentions, you know, Baltimore City and Baltimore County, it makes me think about the Baltimore Regional Water Governance Task Force, whether now or in the midst of this presentation. Can you talk about any effects that has or how this kind of fits into that? Or that fits into this?
Chair, I can, I can take that now. So we're, as you know, and as the Council's fully aware, late last, last year and last, the General Assembly, there was a legislation that formed the Baltimore Regional Water Governance Task Force. It was about 13 members that met, starting in September. They finished up their work in January of this year, provided recommendations on what they think the next best step is in terms of looking at the overall water system. The group notes in their report that they met for a very, very short time period and there was a lot of outstanding questions that they still think that another, another party would have to go and look at. So the, the recommendation was submitted to our mayor, county executive, and the governor back at the end of January. So it's still with them in terms of the next steps. And I know there's some current legislation as well that was filed in the General Assembly that potentially could fund part of that work. But overall, what you're looking at is a three-year process to look at the water system through a more technical work group and then ultimately come up those recommendations. There's still some outstanding questions about pension liabilities and what it would cost to refinance some of the outstanding debt, both in the Baltimore City and Baltimore County systems. And so some of those questions would have to be answered in that next phase of the work.
Understand. And then one other piece on this, I've gotten up to speed with recent meetings, but can you, and just for the sake of everyone's edification, can you talk about the pipe lining and cure it in place? Because I think these are terminologies that maybe some people may not be familiar with, but obviously that's part of the work you do.
Yeah, so for pipelining, if you think of a hole in the ground, a manhole, and a sock, and you push that sock into that hole, you're lining the, you're lining the pipe. That's what pipelining is. You're pushing a sock through a sewer or even a water, a water main and curing it to becomes a hard pipe. That's pipelining. All right, lastly, for me at least, I'll be talking about our, some performance challenges. And we do, we do have, we do have a number of them. I think two in particular, cost control. So starting with that, we need to reduce our dependency, the city's dependency on third-party vendors. Not only because, not only is that essential for self-sustaining, but it also costs. So we, how do we do that? We need to improve our current staff recruiting and retainage practices, again, so that with the result of, the result of less, less reliability on those third-party vendors. I will note that on the operational side of the treatment plants, in order to be an operator at a treatment plant requires a license. That license is a three-year process. So not only do we have to recruit for that person, retain them for three years, train them for three years, and then they sit for their license. So they have to actually pass the test to get that license. So it's a minimum of three-year practice to get a licensed operator who will hopefully will be a permanent fixture within the organization.
And you already anticipated the question I was going to ask, which was around how do we get there? But then the other part is, how many folks are we talking about? I mean, what's, financially, what's that going to mean for, for the department? Trying to bring on those folks and retain them?
Yeah, so it is a savings for the city because we're, right now, we're relying on the third-party vendors. So over time, that cost will go down and our staff increases go up, but not to the price of what we're paying today.
And then where are we in terms of improving that staff, in terms of recruiting? I mean, do we have folks in a pipeline now or is this something that we're working on still?
And we'll, we'll touch on that on an upcoming slide. Yes.
Perfect.
So again, I mentioned about the three-year process just to get a license. One item that we are, that we have developed and continue to expand on is our Be More Wise program. So that's where we are, a vehicle for us to identify, attract external candidates, get them into an apprentice program. They go through the, the two days a week of class, three days on-the-job training, and come out of that with at least the technical knowledge that's required to, to be on a treatment plant. So it's a very, it's a very beneficial program, not only for the individual, but for us. And it's also a way for us, it's what we see as the way to, to bring in talent and retain that talent. And it's been a successful program. We actually expanded it to include not only external, but now internal. So we have, not right now, but we do have two classes going. We have two classes, one for our external candidates and then our staff who have not been trained, have never been trained. Now they have an opportunity to, to be trained in the classroom and then eventually take their, their test for licensure. So that's on the dependency on their third-party vendors. The other item for cost control is we need to do a better job of anticipating chemical, material, equipment costs, which I touched on for one example on the, on the water contract. So how do we do that? We're looking at different vehicles for contracting cooperatives with surrounding municipalities or other system owners. We're looking at new inspection and replacement technologies. So I mentioned on the lead program, we're looking at other ways that we can inspect pipe to determine if it is lead and then new ways to replace that pipe rather than open, an open excavation and pulling the pipe out and replacing it. There are other, there may be other options. And then how we phase our work. Instead of doing a rehabilitation of a facility, a pump station at one time, maybe we're taking it in phases. So we're spreading the costs over a certain number of years rather than one lump sum in one year. So we are looking at different ways that we can run the business of managing a water and wastewater utility. Our second challenge is on procurement. So. Our second challenge is on procurement. So we need to expand the number of multiple awards that we give out for contracts, so we're not solely reliant on one contractor or one vendor. So we are moving in that direction. We have moved in that direction very recently. And then frankly, we need to improve our own internal management of contracts. I think historically, we've had people or groups of people who have managed our contracts, but that responsibility is now shifting to the operators, because they're the ones who are actually using the service or the material. They're the ones who know best what service I need, how long do I need it for, what material I need, how much of that material I need. So it's a learning process for our staff on understanding, I need to keep track of an inventory, I need to manage a contract. It's something that's new to many people, but it is necessary for us to sustain ourselves, not only now, but long term. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, council members. Regionally, once again, CFO, Chief Financial Officer for DPW. So today, I'm going to show a summary of the financial status for the three utility funds. So for the first one, wastewater utility, and this sort of model will follow through with the others as well. We have a three-year fiscal comparison between actual and budget with focus on the FY24 status. We're giving you first quarter and second quarter, half years of data that's in the city's accounting system. And then the projection based upon, the projection model is from our consultants, and they based upon historical trends. And also forward-looking, they take into consideration measurable and established cost changes, increases or decreases. And so that's how they come with the projection for FY24. And then finally, there's a budget line. The budget process is slightly different. That's why the numbers are different from the projection and the budget. And so that's, this is a status for the wastewater. The next slide. So again, the same logic follows. It's a three-year comparison, fiscal year comparison, with focus on the fourth quarter, with the numbers that we currently have for the first and second quarter for FY24, and with the projections that you see in the budget for FY24. And then the stormwater utility, again, it's the same sort of comparison of the three fiscal years with focus on FY24, with a mix of actuals projected.
Good afternoon. I'm Deepthi Mota, CEO. I'll provide an update on our vacancies. As compared to last year, in the Water and Wastewater Bureau for the overall vacancy, the number has continued to decrease, and it's currently at 24.5%. We expect this number to go, continue to decrease as we're implementing the water and wastewater study, salary study right now. And with our focus on BMOYs, with our focus on apprenticeship programs and partnerships with local universities, we expect this number to continue to decrease as we move forward.
So when you go over these in the future slides, could you also talk about, are there any positions that you're having difficulty filling? Because I mean, I see the improvement there, but if you, on this slide and others, if you just mentioned those two, that'd be great.
The positions that we have difficulty recruiting, it is getting better. For example, our engineer vacancy, it was vacant for a while. We implemented the new water, the salary study. And in fact, not this orientation, but the one previously, we made offers to roughly 12 engineers. We had seven start two weeks ago, two started this year, and the next are starting. The same thing goes with our chemist vacancy, which is hard to fill as well. We roughly had nine start this past Monday. So it is hard to fill vacancies. We are filling them as we're implementing due to the water and wastewater study.
Can I just add one more in there? Because I just want to really highlight this. So we had struggled for many, many, many months on filling the vacant position of the wastewater plant manager position over at Back River. And so kudos to the team, because they did an excellent job of bringing in somebody with great experience. We stole them from WSSC. So I'm happy to see that we're actually stealing people back from other utilities, right? But that was such a critical position for us to fill. But I just want to give major kudos to our HR staff for going out and doing those recruitments. We've really focused in on our HR staff, and I think those numbers have shown. Obviously, we're focusing here on water and wastewater, but the number of positions we hired for routine services and solid waste, to make sure that we can implement weekly recycling, it's the same type of strategy that we're going to be using to fill these critical positions on the water and wastewater side.
And that struggle actually is a nationwide issue. So if you're looking at it in any cities and any regions in the country, you'll find that people have that difficulties trying to find those specific people with those specific set of skills. It's a really difficult task to do. So the guys are doing, I think, as good as they can, try to identify those folks, especially the folks who works in those facilities. That's a difficult group of, you know, set of skills.
Next slide. So if we look at a water utility, the story is the same. The vacancy rate is continuing to decrease. Compared to last year, we're at 24.11%. And again, we hope that this vacancy will continue to decrease as the water and, due to the water and wastewater salary study. In wastewater, it's the same story. We were at 28.81% last year, and in February of this year, we were at 25.25%. Next slide. And stormwater too, the vacancy rate continues to decrease. We were at 21.83% last February, and we're at 20.48% this year.
Latoya Curtis, Acting Chief of Staff. Waterfall, we have a total of 4,642 approved homeowners, 755 total approved tenants. The total amount approved is $4.7 million. And the total amount approved by homeowners, 3.7 million and 954,000 for approved tenants. There are 11,000 applications, and the applications are broken out by 7,532 total owners, homeowners, and 4,386 tenants.
Excuse me. As far as the applications, I mean, I see the total applications and the ones approved. Do you still have applications in the pipeline, and what does that look like?
So the applications are actually not housed in DPW. Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, they approve applications, so I'm not really privy to what is coming in. Once they're approved, they send them over to DPW to process in the water billing system.
Okay.
But I can get you that information if you want to know what's in the pipeline. I can get that for you.
Yeah, that'd be great. And one other piece, and this is not necessarily, it's more of a comment than a question. I just know that sometimes our office and others, you know, we try to work, help folks through the application process and try to make it as seamless as possible. But thank you.
Okay, welcome. And as far as Promise Pay, I wanted to inform you that we, as of January of this year, we have now included commercial properties in the interest-free payment plans. Right now, we have 2,907 active plans. To date, we have collected over $2 million and have processed 26,000 payments. We have scheduled 4.2 million to be paid out, and the future amount of payments are 26,862 payments. As far as the active plans, we have 2,885 that are residential, 22 that are commercial, and the average plan balance is $1,533. The median balance is $974. And as of now, 94% of our payment plans are, the active plans are on track for payment.
I know this is kind of a broad question, but do you, is there, let's say, a profile or, in terms of the types of commercial properties, commercial owners who are in this program? Because I know there are some that have issues, they have issues in terms of contesting a bill or the amount, and then those who are behind. Can you talk about that? I mean, are there certain types of businesses that are involved in this?
So that's any type of commercial building, I mean, commercial customer. If they have a dispute, they will work that dispute through the Customer Support and Service Division. And our chief, Toya Sykes, is leading that along with our law department. You'll hear a little bit more about what they're doing as far as disputes and collections.
Okay.
But they would start there, getting dispute resolved before we would send them into the payment plans.
Got it. And Chair, I also want to just jump in there and note, so last year in January of 2023, that's when we started partnering with Promise Pay. So for that first year of the program, we focused primarily on residential customers. So that's why you do see the number higher for residential customers. Starting this year in January 24, we expanded it to all customers. So over time throughout this year, we anticipate that number to go up on the commercials that are participating.
Good afternoon. Katie Brinson, Hitting Deputy General Counsel. In December of 2023, DPW formed a Commercial Collections Task Force, whose primary duty was to tackle and collect on the largest outstanding balances. We instituted a process with our Customer Support and Service Department, which we call CSSD, and that included a full analysis, a full investigation, and a full verification of the account, making sure that all work orders, all pending meter checks and investigations have been performed and completed. Upon that scrubbing of the account, CSSD, in collaboration with DPW's legal department, we collaborated, we conferred, we sent collection letters, and we would meet and confer with those account holders in order to accelerate and promote some kind of payment arrangement. As of March 1st of 2024, we have collected over $9.9 million. We are pleased to announce that even in the past two weeks, we've been able to collect another $1.6 million in those efforts.
Can you just say it again for me? Sorry. It's good news. I like hearing it.
It's great news. Love to repeat it. As of March 1st, 2024, we have collected over $9.9 million. In the past two weeks alone, we've been able to collect another $1.6 million for a total of about $11.5 million.
Okay. And I understand if you don't have it, but if you could, is there an average, or the average size of the back payment you receive from individuals?
We, it varies based upon, after we verify the account, meet with the account holder. Some, for instance, once it's verified, on one, it was owed, for instance, $1.8 million. We collected $1.6. So it varies based upon how old the account is. If some of the account balance is well over 300 days, there may be other arrangements made. But our goal is to collect as much as the verified account as possible, depending on the collectability, et cetera.
And one follow-up question to that. So those accounts, are those individuals who had just, or entities that had just not paid, or some of them had not received bills, or is it a mix of both? Or what was primarily driving that? Do you have an idea?
A part of this answer, I would defer to our CSSD Chief, Toya Sykes, who's here. Most of it, to my recollection, and we can certainly follow back up with you, was a myriad many times. It's bills that just had not been tackled by the account holder. Many needed payment arrangement, but had not necessarily taken the initiative, I would say, to arrange such. So with our, with CSSD and the legal department taking the initiative to send such letters, initiating the phone calls, and reminding them that we have these bills due, it accelerated that collection effort thus far, as we are refining further methods of collaborating and collecting.
One follow-up. So given this collection, which I'm very excited about, what do we anticipate for the rest of the year? I mean, I don't want to get my hopes up too much, but I mean, what do you anticipate in terms of future collections?
Chair, I'll jump in there. But first, I just want to commend the staff for tackling this issue. So the first line on that last slide was, they just started this in December, right? So this is a very brand-new process, and just in a very short three months' time, that's $11 million that we've collected through this process exactly. So huge round of applause for the team, because it's a small team. There's not that many other people besides Ms. Hinton that are working behind that and tackling this commercial collections issue. What we're doing right now is actually recruiting to fill about five to six positions that are going to be primarily focused within CSSD, and are going to aggressively go and start communicating directly with more of these commercial accounts, those that have not paid. So to more bluntly answer the last question, these are accounts that have not paid the city on their bills. And so those are the accounts that we're going after in this process.
And I do want to add that we are looking at industry practice and doing the collections, but we have to be sensitive to the culture of Baltimore City, given our programs like Promise Pay and so on. So we're finding ways that fit into the culture in the city of Baltimore, as well as instituting industry practices to ensure that we're collecting viable accounts.
Which is one of the reasons why we also took off the limit. I think Promise Pay was, there is the limit of 5,000, which now there is no limit, thus allowing commercial accounts to enter into such payment arrangements.
And I think that was the end of your presentation, right? So I have a couple of questions from earlier on. One, just going back to the consent decree, can you talk a little bit about, it says that 89% of the injunctive relief items will be completed by the end of 2024. What would be remaining?
There was the main two capital improvement projects that you've noticed, that we noted on one of the slides in the presentation. That's the egg-shaped digester project over at Back River, and that's the headworks improvement over at Patapsco. Both of those are very large, aggressive capital improvement projects. The egg-shaped digesters is about $90 million, headworks improvement about $50 million. But those would be the last two remaining projects tied up in this consent decree. One has a current estimated completion date of September 27, the other one, August of 27. So when those two projects are completed, that would also signify the end of the consent decree.
Okay. And then back to the consent decree, I'm familiar, but just for everyone else's, you know, knowledge, can you talk about that original one? Because you mentioned going back to 2002 and, you know, the relationship between the two.
Okay, so two separate items here. So we have a modified consent decree that deals specifically with our sanitary sewer system, and that's the one that was in place, as you noted. The wastewater consent decree is the item that we just negotiated with MD and executed at the end of 2023.
Awesome. And then a selfish question, a personal one. So Drew Lake Reservoir, I mean, I'm excited about, you know, the improvement there. Do you have an idea about when the, all the construction will be completed around there?
We're anticipating summer of this year.
There you go. All right. I feel better. I told someone summer, but I want to make sure that was correct. All right, all right. And then for the rest, okay, that's enough. I think I don't think we have any testimony, questions online. Yeah, so there's no one here testify online or in person or online. I think I've asked the questions. I know Council reporter was able to ask questions. We were able to ask questions together. I would just say, are there any other things that we haven't asked you, or things that we should be thinking about in the next quarter, if you will?
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, no, also, is there anyone here who didn't testify, who wanted to testify or had any words? Just want to make sure. We heard everybody. Well, again, I would just say, I am really encouraged by some of the things that I've heard today, particularly around the millions of dollars we've collected. Again, that we think about finance and performance, right? We've talked about the performance of the agency, but the financial piece is important. And then I know both myself and Council reporter had talked about some of the, some of the capital improvements. I know that's an ongoing piece. But I will say, I just, I thank you for your, for your time today. It was productive, I would like to say. So again, thank you all for being here. Thank you for your team. And at this point, we will be in recess. So again, enjoy the rest of your day, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.